Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your patience. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of December 5, 2022, to order. You will note that we are remote for this meeting. Not everyone at council was together at the same party over the weekend, but we did have more than a few bugs that came down that made it much better for us not to be infecting anyone else. So please bear with us as we again use the technology that we do have available for exactly these reasons. Tonight, we begin with our pledge of allegiance. Do we have the Boy Scout Troop 262 to lead us in the pledge?
They are here.
Wonderful, thank you.
Color Guard, prepare to advance. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, prepare to post colors. In the audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. All those in uniform salute, all those who have been in clothes, right hand of her heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color Guard, post colors. Color Guard, salute. Two. Color Guard, regroup. Color Guard, dismiss. Audience may be seated.
Thank you. Our next order of business is roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Hostage. Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Excused.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner.
Here.
Mayor Middleton.
Present.
Three members present.
We have one presentation this evening. It's from Aaron Haake of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and it is a presentation on the Coachella Valley Rail Project, which Aaron has been absolutely instrumental on. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, and members of the council and residents of Palm Springs. It is an honor to be with you here this evening to talk about this transformational transportation project, economic project. It's a number of different things for Palm Springs and the entire Coachella Valley. It's been in the works for many years, but we still have a lot of work to do. But it has been gaining momentum thanks to the efforts and the leadership of Mayor Middleton, who serves as the Commissioner on the Riverside County Transportation Commission on behalf of the City of Palm Springs. So I wish to thank you, Commissioner, for all of your work that has resulted in much of what I'm going to present in this update tonight on the rail efforts. So tonight, I just want to go over where we are with the rail project, why we're doing it, and where we're headed next. So here's a map of the corridor that we are proposing in conjunction with Caltrans and the Federal Railroad Administration. In fact, this is much more than about the Coachella Valley, even though the name of the project is Coachella Valley Rail. We're looking to connect four counties in Southern California, east to west. Even though Riverside County is the fifth fastest-growing county in the United States and the fastest-growing county in California, and certainly the valley is part of that growth, we are the only region of our population and size that does not have an intercity passenger rail service on a daily basis, and we're trying to change that. So the proposed corridor that you see here on the map begins on the west at Los Angeles Union Station and would terminate in the east in the city of Coachella. And actually, this is only the first step of what is actually a national vision that Amtrak and the federal government have of eventually having an interstate corridor that goes from LA through the valley to Phoenix and Tucson on a daily basis. As many of you may know, today, there is intermittent passenger rail service that comes through here. Actually, Palm Springs has a station. It's, I believe, the only Amtrak station in Riverside County, other than the city of Riverside, which I think is much less used than the Palm Springs station. But that rail service that comes through here often comes through in the middle of the night and is not exactly attractive to a high volume of passengers, shall we say. So we're looking to provide regular, reliable, daily round-trip service, and we are gaining momentum. Now, you'll see on the map, the dots. These are the areas where we are fairly certain that the station stops will be. Of course, Palm Springs is the only one in the valley that has one of those dots, again because it has a station today. The environmental study that we just completed, the Tier One Environmental Study, identified potential station areas in the San Bernardino County area around Redlands and Loma Linda, one in the San Gorgonio Pass area, one what we're calling Mid Valley here in the Coachella Valley, one in Indio, and then a station at the terminus in the city of Coachella. Now, the exact station sites for the rest of these have not been determined. That will be done in the next phase of the environmental process, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. But to the west, we are also looking at stations at the existing downtown Riverside Station and the existing Fullerton Station, where you can transfer down into South Orange County on MetroLink or Amtrak, and the same at LA Union Station on the west. So the corridor service that we're proposing would cover 144 miles, and the population numbers here are just staggering when you think about all of the areas that it would traverse through, which is again why we're talking about this as more than just a Coachella Valley service. We're looking at this to be an entire Southern California connection, looking at nine stations, and we're looking at a potential runtime of three hours and 15 minutes end to end. It's really important to us and to the success of the eventual service that this is competitive with the automobile. You know, no one likes to sit in traffic, but we also want to make sure that the trip is quick enough that people will say, hey, you know, it's comparable somewhat in time if I were to take the train. So that will also factor into the discussion about where stations are located. We certainly want to have stations where they make sense, where we can get a lot of riders, but also to make sure that the trains keep moving so we can get folks to where they need to be in a timely manner. So why are we pursuing this? This is an era in which transportation is trending more towards alternative modes. We're looking at ways to get people out of their cars. We're looking into options that are sustainable and that provide an alternative to driving on the freeway. No one needs to explain to the community here what happens on I-10 during certain parts of the year, or when there's an accident, or an incident, or severe weather. There are not a lot of other alternatives. We want to be sure that we're providing a system that has redundancy and backup, but also that traverses this entire region. And right now, we don't have that east-west connection. There is a north-south connection on rail, which you may have taken before. It's called the Pacific Surf Liner. It's called the Pacific Surfliner. It goes from San Diego up to San Luis Obispo via Los Angeles, and we're envisioning a comparable-type service here. But we're also looking at this as a way for people to access the outstanding tourism industry that you've developed here, also for ways for people in the inland empire to access the Coachella Valley on a daily basis, whether that's for jobs, for recreation, or any other purpose. So during the effort to get to this point, where we certified the environmental, Tier One Environmental Document in July, we did extensive public outreach over the last several years. We had meetings with your staff, with your team, with government agencies up and down the valley, but also we had town halls, virtual public meetings. We did an extensive push on social media in both English and Spanish. All of our outreach is bilingual, and I do have documents here at the table today for any members of the public who are here who wish to take information. It's both in English and Spanish. We'll continue to provide that. We've also gotten a significant amount of media attention. We've been in several publications. We've been on the radio. There was a lot of interest, not just in this area, but throughout the greater Los Angeles area in this project, and we look for that to continue. So here's where we are today. In fact, this timeline doesn't do justice to the work that's gone on. The concept for this rail service first began in 1991. It was the first time it was really looked at. It's gone in fits and starts since then, but it's really picked up steam since 2016, when Senator Feinstein assisted us in getting a grant to do the environmental document we just completed, and that's what happened this summer. The other thing that happened this summer, and I need to give Commissioner Middleton a great deal of credit, she had an audience with the CEO of Amtrak and his leadership team at LA Union Station earlier this summer, where after we certified the environmental document, they wanted to talk to us about the potential for this rail service to kind of go to the next step and next level. Commissioner has also had an audience with the California Secretary of Transportation and his leadership team, among some others. As we go into this next phase, which I'll talk about in a minute, which is the Tier Two Environmental Document, where we can get more specific about what this service is going to look like and what the stations are going to look like. And once we finish that environmental work, and actually, we have to get the funding for that, which I'll talk about in a moment, but once we complete that environmental work, then we could get into designing the stations and the rail and get into construction. I do want to mention that right now, we're envisioning, this is quite a bit of infrastructure. We're going to need to add a third mainline track to the Union Pacific Line, which is out there today right now. There's only two tracks for most of the way. This service would need a full third track, and as well as the development of those stations, as well as potential grade separations. I just covered all of that. So what we're doing right now, and this is where the city has been very helpful, and we are pushing quite hard, is we're seeking the final $20 million that we need of $60 million to complete that environmental document for Tier Two. The application from Caltrans to the US Department of Transportation for that $20 million was submitted last Wednesday. So that is very recent and great news, that we have the full support of the state of California for this funding. We have the balance of that $60 million in state, other state and federal funds. Some good news is that the infrastructure bill that Congress approved last year, or this year, actually, has quite a bit of money for rail in it, and we're hoping to get a piece of that here in the Coachella Valley. The city has provided a support letter for our grant, and we're very grateful for that. We've also gone directly to Washington, DC, met with our entire congressional delegation. We formed an ad hoc committee at RCTC at the request and suggestion of Commissioner Middleton. So a number of elected officials throughout the county, not just here in the valley, are engaged in advocating for this project. They went to DC in September in advance of us submitting this grant application, met with Congressmember Ruiz, Calvert-Tocano, Senator Feinstein, and Senator Padilla's office, as well as members of the US DOT leadership team. So as we do this effort to pursue funding and to get through the steps that we need to get through on the state and federal regulatory process to get this project done, among some other steps we need to take, it's important for the public to stay engaged. We welcome it. We have a new project website, which is listed on your screen, rctc.org/cvr. Other contact info is on the screen, and of course, if there's any members of the public wishing to speak to me while I'm here tonight, I'm happy to do that after the presentation. You can also follow us on social media. So we certainly welcome your questions, your engagement as this project moves along. We're very excited about where we're at. Again, there's been a great deal of interest and momentum over the last several months on this. So thank you for having me here and providing this opportunity.
Erin, thank you. Are there questions for Erin? Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Thank you. I'm just curious about the, I'm sorry, the time that it takes, the three hours and 15 minutes. Is that something that would be able to change in the future to get a higher speed rail, that it would take less time than that?
That's an interesting question. We may be able to make some marginal improvements on the runtime, depending on how many station stops. Sometimes what a rail service will do is they'll have express service, so they won't stop at every station, so that can shave a few minutes off. In terms of, you know, making an order of magnitude change in the travel time, that will be difficult, given that we are operating on freight rail tracks with other conventional trains that won't be able to, say, move out of the way as quickly. So we're somewhat limited there.
Okay. And thank you so much. It's really helpful to see all of this, and thank you to the mayor for your work as well. It's very exciting to see this actually moving forward.
Are there other questions for Erin? Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much to our mayor for her leadership in making this happen. This is a transformative project for all of Southern California, and it's really incredible to hear how she's helped and spearheaded this work. So thank you, Mayor. My question is just about how and when it will be decided about where the other stops will be. You noted that there might be a stop in the pass region and other locations in the eastern Coachella Valley. Obviously, interest is we consider, you know, where people live and work throughout this region. So could you just explain a little bit more detail about that process and when that will be determined?
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, council member. So that process will play out as part of the Tier Two Environmental Document, where we're looking at the specifics of where all of the infrastructure will go. It will take into consideration, you know, where people are coming from, what the environmental impacts are of each of the potential station alternatives that exist, and that's a public process that's defined in state and federal law. So we'll be using the environmental process to sort through the station questions. In the meantime, there are communities along the corridor that are getting a jumpstart, if you will, on this process by looking at their own land use decisions and potential opportunities to create transit-oriented developments. So some of your neighboring cities have started the process of doing station feasibility studies on their own, so that when it comes time to do that environmental process, they have proposals to put on the table for us to look at. And then I do also want to acknowledge that, at least I know of in the pass area, that our tribal partners are also looking at participating in this process as well, and we certainly welcome all tribal partners to work with us if they have interests in station locations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of additional comments beyond. Thank you to Erin and everyone at RCTC, who've been outstanding in terms of the work that you have done. This is a generational project, and generational projects take sometimes a generation or more to be built, so it's not going to happen tomorrow, but that's not a reason to not do this hard work now. And we've got with this administration in DC the best opportunity we've ever had to make this happen. I really appreciate the kind words from Erin and everybody else, but this has been a project that has unanimous support from the Riverside County Transportation Commission, each and every one of the 34, 35 cities of our county. Their representative has been strongly supportive, and Supervisor Perez and all of the supervisors have been instrumental as we've been moving forward. The last I want to say to my colleagues here in Palm Springs is we will see other cities in the Coachella Valley stepping up to create new transit-oriented hubs in their city, and we have an advantage in Palm Springs in that we've got an existing station, but it's a station that, when we start to think about where we want to be, is going to need some tender, loving care, as the Realtors would say. So we should start to put on our drawing board for the upcoming year, what are the kinds of things that we want to commit to, so that we don't just sit on laurels that we already have from having an existing station. Erin, everyone, thank you, and our apologies that we weren't there to see you in person, but frankly, you didn't want to interact with us, some of us, tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you.
With that, we'll go on to acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda. May amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items. Be removed for a separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or a council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? With that, let me make note that the public hearing item 2A is being removed from the agenda this evening.
Mayor, if I may, this is Teresa, interim city manager. If we could continue the public hearing to a future date of February 23rd, that will give staff the time to allow us to finalize revisions to the development and settlement agreement that would be implemented and implement the amendments to the planning entitlements, so that they can be considered together at that future date of February 23rd.
All right, thank you. And we know that we did have some individuals who wanted to provide public comment. Since we will not be providing the public hearing, if you still want to make public comment this evening, you should do so at the time that we are having a public comment for agenda items. Also, I should make note that Councilmember Hostage has joined us. She was there just when we started the roll call.
And staff has one more correction, if we may?
Yes, please.
Deputy City Manager Flynn Fag would like to make a comment.
Regarding Agenda Item 1G, which is the mural at 1491 South via Solidad, there is an error in the recording of the vote of the Public Arts Commission. It indicates that Commissioner Lesniak voted in favor of the mural. Actually, Commissioner Lesniak abstained from the vote, and Commissioner Favre voted in favor. So the vote, again, is still four in favor and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or corrections from staff? Seeing none, Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the record and for the public. I've been in attendance in the meeting the whole time. I apologize. I did have to step away and put myself on mute for a few minutes, so I did miss the roll call, but I have been in attendance from the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
As obviously you have. All right. I would like to pull item 1K for separate discussion. Or is there anyone else from council who has any items that you would like to pull? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the agenda with item 1A removed for separate discussion?
Some moved.
Okay.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Four yes, motion passes.
All right. This time, I invite City Attorney Ballinger to provide a report of the closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the closed session with their negotiators. There was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note the public testimony for public hearings will be taken at the public hearing, time of public hearing, and general comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. And again, item 2A was continued to February 23rd. Madam clerk, please call on the public comments.
Our first public speaker is Michael Joseph Picken. You have two minutes.
Michael Joseph Picken, public testimony for 1K, 3B, C, E, and F. This is not about scandal. This is about Palm Springs monetary greed and uncaring business practices. This is my constitutional duty to address grievances to those in positions of authority regarding their loyalty to all the people. Are you pledging your loyalty to the United States of America or to Indian nations, your own financial interests, or foreign influence? I do not work for you. Rather, you, as my representatives, work for me. I do not have to like you. You do not have to like me, but I do ask for your professionalism and working towards those areas we both have in common interest. In the coming weeks, in the new year, I will double my efforts to follow up with you. I will again be asking for your help to resolve areas of failure that need to be resolved and should have been resolved a year ago. Today, I ask for a 20-year accounting of STI infections allocations for STI cure in California. Who and how I have sex in my own privacy with like-minded consenting adults is my own business. No allocations is religious, political, racial, sex, moral judgment, and civil rights discrimination in the law. Today, I ask for a 10-year Palm Springs history of affordable housing plans. Today, I ask for a 10-year future Palm Springs affordable housing plan. Knee-jerk reactions to criticisms is no way to run government business.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Philip Nguyen. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Mayor Middleton and Mayor Pro Tem Garner, city council and staff. My name is Philip Nguyen. My family and I are the owner and operators of a Catalan Mediterranean restaurant and OG Arabian Nights dispensary located at 232 North Palm Canyon since 2019. First, I would like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Garner on her successful campaign and allowing her to continue representing Palm Springs, and we have our fingers crossed that the council member Hostage will be our voices incremental soon. Both of you have worked hard to keep Palm Springs business friendly, which is so important for so many. Recently, OG Arabian Nights was issued a $5,000 maximum fine citation, which we strongly feel the fine was issued in error. We believe we were treated in an unfair manner in our appeal hearing, which was hastily reviewed and ignored important facts. Cannabis is relatively new to business, and the appeals board member shortcomings stem from the Lego cannabis base experience. We feel our appeal was unfairly denied and found ourselves with no backup and the city to reach out to. That is why we applaud the city council's effort for overseeing the appellate process to have a fair and just hearing on all business, including Palm Springs cannabis operators and the citations. It's so important that the law... It's so important that the law-abiding business operators can be fairly treated, and for this, I commend your efforts tonight. Please note that I'm always available for questions, and with that, I wish you all a safe and warm holiday season. Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Wajak.
You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, and staff. My name is Stephen Viatik. First off, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Protem Garner on a successful campaign and another term with us, and we're rooting for Kristi Hostage in the State Assembly as well. So I'm here tonight in support of item 3E. I applaud the City Council for discussing this item, which I think will lead to a very fair and improved decision-making and appeal process for businesses. I think it's very important that our local government has these necessary checks and balances in place and that City Council can provide oversight and can pull and review decisions from all boards and commissions. Speaking from personal experience, I was issued a citation that I believe is an error, and I lost a lot of sleep over it, wondering what I can do and if I would be stuck with any final decision by the appeals board, which in turn affects my employees as well. Knowing that City Council would have the ability to review decisions by the appeals board gives me and other businesses greater assurance and hope that a decision at the appeals board level is not final because City Council can intervene if there's a problem. I think that it's important that with these changes, you also please consider being able to go back a year and review any prior appeals board outcomes that deserve an in-depth review. Thank you, and I'm wishing all of you happy and safe holidays. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have one speaker online, David Friedman.
Hello? Can you hear me?
You have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Protem Garner, and Councilmembers. My name is David Friedman. I'm speaking to you on item 3D, adoption of the California Building Standards Code in my capacity as a member of the Sustainability Commission, as well as program manager at SEVAG for Desert Community Energy and the New Inland Regional Energy Network, or IRIN. Following up on the climate action discussion at last week's council meeting, I want to call your attention to the 2022 California Energy Code, one of the building codes proposed for adoption. The Energy Code is a core component of the state's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in buildings, which account for nearly 40% of the estimated GHG emissions in Palm Springs. For new residential buildings, the 2022 code has pre-wiring requirements for electric space heating, cooking, and clothes dryers when gas equipment is installed, and water heating equipment must be an electric heat pump. The 2022 code also revises and updates the solar PV language first introduced in the 2019 Energy Code. For new non-residential buildings, the 2022 code adds requirements for PV and battery storage systems for specific building types, including warehouses. There are also new mandatory requirements for controlled environment horticulture systems such as cannabis cultivation regarding dehumidification, lighting, electrical power distribution, building envelope, and space conditioning. While the Energy Code sets minimum statewide standards, jurisdictions may establish stricter rules. As Sustainability Director LP McCloy mentioned to you last week, the Sustainability Commission has prepared for your consideration following stakeholder outreach ordinances that will help bring existing residential buildings up to the 2022 code requirements for new buildings and have cannabis cultivation facilities be even more energy and water efficient. Finally, IRIN will soon be launching training and education programs for building department staff and the building industry to support, understand, and effectively implement the new Energy Code. Thank you for your consideration.
We have no further speakers.
All right, thank you. And we will move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without item 1K, which was removed for separate discussion. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton. Four ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
Okay. So I pulled item 1K, and I may very well have been misreading some parts of this, but I want to make sure that the understanding that I, that I now have is, in fact, the correct understanding. What we are attempting to do here is to make it clear that an individual who serves on one of our boards and commissions and who is a member of a nonprofit organization or some other organization that would have issues in front of the City Council or issues in front of one of our boards or commissions is restricted from speaking to that commission upon which they sit, but is not restricted from speaking to any other board or commission or to the City Council expressing opinions on any subject. I see.
I can, I, I'm happy to answer. Well, we're a city attorney, but yeah, so the, the goal was to loosen the restrictions so people could advocate other than the board they sit in or board they appoint. If they have a fiduciary relationship with another, with the organization.
Mr. Ballinger, is that the correct interpretation?
I was looking for him.
Yes.
All right. Okay. That interpretation, that settles my, my issues with 1K, and I move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question for a discussion, if I may, Madam Mayor. So for the city attorney, so is that consistent with state law, with First Amendment free speech rights? Because I know, for example, even if council has a conflict, I believe we're still allowed to speak to the council, even though it might be deemed improper, and you know, we may not do that. We actually do have a First Amendment right to advocate. So could you just explain how that impacts a free speech?
Yes. So I should point out that in the first instance, our ordinance is broader than state law with regard to defining what a conflict is. You're right that state law, when it comes to conflicts of interest, laws do allow for some narrow exceptions to, to public officials who are otherwise conflicted, enabling them to address the City Council, for instance, as a member of the public at the, at the podium with respect to their own individual interests, not the interest of, of other third parties. So I think that this ordinance would probably be interpreted similarly to allow for that type of addressing if, if it's dealing with their own interests. However, should be pointed out that the, the nature of these conflicts, by their nature, are dealing with third parties, i.e. nonprofits. So I think that it is and would be consistent with protections afforded under both the state and federal rights of free speech.
Thank you. I agree with you. And then also typically, the city council or another body is the body who's deciding that issue, so they would still have an ability to advocate there. So I agree that it's sufficient, and I'll support the motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Four yeses, zero noes, motion passes.
Thank you.
And it would be appropriate at this point to read the title of that ordinance. It's an ordinance adoption.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending section 260020 and 260040 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding duties of officials who serve as voting members of certain nonprofit boards, currently retained attorney or accountant for such boards, or trustees of charitable trust under the City of Palm Springs Public Integrity Ordinance.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3A, approve a 10-year concession agreements for retail and food and beverage services at Palm Springs International Airport. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening to Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem and Council. Thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us today. We are recommending approval of a 10-year agreement for a new concessions program, which we believe will be transformative to the airport. We started this process a year ago, and that process has taken many turns, but we've been in partnership with the Airport Commission on this. In fact, they scoped the concessions program as well as set the evaluation criteria, and we believe we have a program that's going to work for the sustainability as well as the operations of the airport. So I'm going to turn it over to Victoria, who's going to walk you through the presentation, and then we'll take questions from there.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. So I'm going to go ahead and go through the timeline of the pre-release to where we're at currently. The, during May 2019, the Airport Commission recommended to proceed with a hybrid request for proposal. The request for proposal included one package for food and beverage, one for the retail, and one for a blank slate to solicit to local, the local community. In October 2019, airport staff requested direction from City Council to move forward with the hybrid RFP and received direction from council to work with local preference or local businesses. In addition to that, it was presented to council that the airport is following the rules and regulations of the federal regulations that state that we are not allowed to specifically advertise to local, but we can work with local brands and concepts. Later in March 2020, the concessions RFP was advertised, but then it was immediately removed because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Later in the year of 2020, HMS Host, which was our incumbent for the food and beverage contract, they terminated their agreement and vacated seven of food and beverage locations at the Palm Springs Airport. October 2020, City Council approved an extension with parities for retail and added the food and beverage contract. Parities put in over $500,000 to make improvements to the food and beverage locations. They started out with three locations, and now they have already added two additional locations year-to-date. Next slide? Or do I have that? Can I move it? All right. All right. So then in June 2020, I'm sorry, back up a little bit. So we started, so January 2022, we started working with our Airport Commission to work on the RFP again. We updated the evaluation criteria, the request for proposal document. We looked at the draft concessions agreement, and we coordinated with the Airport Commission to do review of our request for proposal. And from February through April, we worked with our commission staff, our commissioners, and reviewed all comments and suggestions and incorporated as much as we could into the request for proposal. Later on, in June 2020, we went ahead and issued the requests, I'm sorry, June 2022, we issued the request for proposal, and we had that out to the public for a total of 14 weeks. In July, we did a pre-proposal conference with the community where we had over 45 participants attend the, the conference. We showed them all of the locations in the airport, including some of the back of house, which is going to need some improvements. And it was also an opportunity for the local community to talk to some of the larger companies to possibly create partnerships with them so that they can get into the airport. Typically, that'll happen if there needs to be some capital investments. Our proposals were received in September, and then we decided to do interviews with all of our finalists. So we received two proposals for our food and beverage contract, three proposals for our retail contract, and we had individual blank slates, a total of three, which we only received two proposals for one of those blank slates, which happened to be pre-security. The evaluation criteria reviewed all of the, I'm sorry, the evaluation panel reviewed all of the criteria, and from there, we made our recommendation to the Airport Commission of who to select. We went with the Marshall Retail Group for the retail package, parities for the food and beverage package, and we did not select for the blank slate opportunity number two. So I'm going to go through the, really quickly, the concepts. It's going to show what we currently have in place and what we are working with the concessionaire, the proposed concessionaire. You'll see a map of all of the locations for the, the retail side of the house. There is a total of seven different locations. One of them is not identified on here. It happens to be an employee vending machine that's located on the lower level of the Bono Concourse. So for retail location number one in the regional concourse, on the left side, you'll see the CNBC News, and the proposal is Uptown, which currently has a total of six, and Marshall Retail Group can correct me later on, but currently has a total of six local companies that include the Palm Springs Art Museum, local artists that have Craig, Craig Mann, John Cuevas, and Walker Noble, as well as Minty's Breeze Blocks, Desert Supreme, Ravens Hearth, TKB Bakery and Deli. And this opportunity off, offers a Just Walk Out technology, which partners with Amazon. Retail location number two is pre-security. Currently, we have automated vending machines that offer food and beverage, as well as drip-to-cup coffee and some convenience items, as well as grab-and-go items. The Marshall Retail Group is proposing the Pink Door that offers Joshua Tree Coffee Company coffee, Farmer's Fridge, which is grab-and-go food items, and drinks, and other prepackaged food items.
Victoria, can I just clarify? The image on the left is the existing
Yes.
format, and the one on the right is what's proposed, recommended?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Retail location number three is in the Bono Concourse. On the left side, you have Desert News, which is the existing retail location, and on the right side is Hey Joshua, which, as you could see, it mirrors the Joshua Tree National Park. It also has products like Joshua Tree, Desert Rose, Opal Atlas, Molly Moon, Joshua Tree Candle Company, and the Kids Bakery and Deli grab-and-go items. It's mostly convenience items, food and beverage, and retail items. Retail location number four in the Bono Concourse is Desert Mark. It's going to be converted to In Motion, which will have technology items like Apple, Bose, JBL, and a fourth one. I'll come back to that. Retail location number five is in the Bono Concourse. It's actually our largest location that we have there. We have the existing desert marketplace as well as the PGA Tour Shop. It's going to be Mojave Oasis, and I actually listed the, the list of our local vendors. So as you could see, the Palm Springs Body Deli, Mojave Moon, Apicarthy, carry, Rappy Palm Springs, Club Time Wrap, Rancho Relaxo, Thick as Thieves, Palm Springs Life Magazine, Living Desert, The Kids Bakery, Palm Springs Farmer Market, Joshua Tree Coffee, The Ice Green Shop, and it's actually going to have an Angel Wings mural that's done by a LA artist, as well as other national brands. Retail location number six is an automated vending location. As you could see on the left-hand side, we have As you could see on the left-hand side, we have food and beverage and drinks and snacks, as well as convenience items. And so the Marshall Retail Group is going to be putting iHeart Palm Springs, as well as having some photo opportunities with, on the right-hand side, with iHeart Palm Springs and a mural by a Southern California artist. They also are going to have local Palm Springs Crush Crush cookies located inside of the vending machines. This is the employees-only automated vending machines located in the Bono Concourse. And, oops, and they also have a duty-free mobile option, which duty-free is going to be things like fragrance, alcohol, even beauty products offered tax-free. Okay. So the next location is, or the next package is the food and beverage package. This package actually has three local restaurants, the first one being El Mira Sol, the second being Coachella Valley Coffee, and the third being Trio. We'll start off in the regional concourse. Currently, we have Buzz by Barfly located on the left. And Parities is proposing Nine Cities Craft, which they'll be offering local Coachella Valley Brewing, as well as La Quinta Brewing. And our courtyard, our food and beverage location number two and three currently has the Wine Bar, as well as PSP Coffee. And it's going to be Parities Vino Bolo, which also will be offering local Coachella Valley Brewing, La Quinta Brewing. And they also offer food bites, breakfast items, and coffee, as well as wine. One of the great things about food and beverage location number four and the terminal processor after security TSA is that Parities is going to be opening up a restaurant that's been closed since 2020 when HMS Host vacated the space. So they're going to be putting the El Mira Sol, as well as Coachella Valley Coffee in this location. So this is another great food dining option that's going to open up to our passengers and help with some of the capacity constraints that we have right now. The existing Santa Rosa Kitchen on the top left is what we have in place now. And that is going to be replaced with the local Trio. On the opposite side, we're going to have Half Moon Empanadas, which is going to offer a quick grab-and-go bite. It will have savory empanadas, sweet empanadas, as well as food and beverages. This location, the food and beverage number five, is actually a new location that's going to be added for food and beverage. So we currently have a fountain, as well as some art, that's going to be removed. And we're going to place a bar there that's going to also serve food bites. Okay. So with that said, this evening, we are recommending to city council to approve those two 10-year contracts. We have over 40 local vendors that, some of them you see where the actual locations are, the local companies Trio, El Mira Sol, Coachella Valley Coffee for the food and beverage package. But with the retail package, we have multiple products that are going to be sold in the stores there. And so we are recommending that this gets, that the contract is approved by city council this evening. Any questions? And I also have the Marshall Retail Group. If IT, if you could let them into the room, they're available for questions. The Parities Retail is also here, I'm sorry, Parities Food and Beverage is also here with us this evening. So if you have any questions for them, they'll be able to assist.
All right, thank you. Victoria, thank you. Are there questions for staff? Councilmember hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few questions. One, about the 10-year contract, is that the typical term that we were expecting? Could you just speak a little bit to that? And then the contracts are with the overall company that you're recommending. Are there local business agreements or protections for the local businesses who are including, being included now in the proposals?
Okay. So to answer your first question about the 10-year concession agreement. So our prior agreement with Parities, as well as the prior incumbent HMS Host, was a 20-year agreement. So this 10-year agreement is something that is in line with industry standard and allows for the concessionaires to make improvements over the course of 10 years. Second from that, you asked if there's any protections that are in place for the local companies. And so what happens is the concessionaires, they work with the local companies, and they come up with a plan for them to operate here at the airport. One of the reasons why we selected both of the companies, the Marshall Retail Group, as well as Parities, is because they had really good plans when they were working with the local companies. They weren't just going to throw them into the airport. They were going to actually walk them through the process and help them along the way. I'm going to call on Aaliyah with the Marshall Retail Group so she can help me answer that question. And then even call up Pam Brown that works with Parities so that she can further answer the question if there's anything else that's needed.
Good evening. Permission to speak?
Please, go ahead.
Mayor Middleton, members of the council and community, my name's Aaliyah LaRocque. And let me just turn my video on here so you can see me. Hi, I am the Business Development Vice President at Marshall Retail Group. And on behalf of MRG and our local partners, which include Stella Adina here from Rancho Relaxo, as well as Gil Johnson of Procurement Concepts, Inc., both residents of the Palm Springs area, and our other partner Shannon Westmore, who's not with us tonight. We are just thrilled to be the recommended proponent. And if I could, I'd like to share a little bit more about our vision, and then I'll answer your question, Councilwoman. Today, I'd like, so when we were creating our retail concepts, we wanted to create, as Stella puts it, a love letter to Palm Springs and really represent the diversity and the cultural identity of the region. And PSP locals and tourists, we know they're passionate about this little amazing airport, and we're truly excited to enhance the local offerings and bring more of that local flavor into the retail program. So during our outreach for this opportunity, we reached out to dozens of local vendors and institutions, including the ones that Victoria listed earlier. And for some of those institutions, we have letters of intent with them. For others, we have vendor agreements. And as a company that works with hundreds of small local vendors, and we have actually more SKUs than Walmart, we've put measures in place to ensure that small vendors are on a level playing field. And some of those measures, just to be specific, include having dedicated local buyers and paying for UPC ticketing and even paying for shipping. So what you saw today is it's just the beginning of what it, you know, what it's going to look like in exploring the local market. And we're committed to doing that throughout the term of the lease with PSP. In fact, many local vendors are still responding to us after the proposal was submitted, and our buying team will continue that outreach work. So just in closing, we're thrilled to have the opportunity to be a partner, and we look forward to this strong partnership. And if I could, I know Roddy McOwen is on the call too, and he and Gil would love to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Aaliyah. Good job. Good evening, Mayor Middleton and Mayor Pro Tem Gardner and council members and members of staff. Thanks very much for the opportunity to be able to speak with you this evening. Victoria did a fine job in being able to walk through the concepts. We are very excited about the local focus. That's something that sits right in the wheelhouse of Marshall Retail Group. And also on behalf of our minority partners, I'm sitting here with a very well-established partner of ours, Mr. Gil Johnson, who has a residence in your local area. And the one good reason of bringing Gil on board as a partner for us is because Gil is experienced and has worked with MRG over a number of years. So that when we bring on somebody like Stella Adina, who you know very well in the local area, Stella is able to talk and work with another minority partner who has experience with us, and is not just talking with the prime. So on behalf of myself and Mr. Johnson, would you like to say anything, Gil?
Stella is on now.
And there's Stella.
Well, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I've had the opportunity to work with MRG for approximately eight, nine years in different venues. They are incredible partners. I am a part-time resident of Palm Desert. I reside in Palm, my wife and myself reside in Palm Desert. I have to admit, sometimes when, not necessarily in July all the time, but other than that, other than that, you know, we are in San Diego. I'm excited about the opportunity because I'm excited about Palm Springs Airport and bringing Palm Springs Airport to a statue, a place that it really deserves to be, and to, you know, have the amenities that will serve our client base and really represent the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. I think Stella might want to say something. Stella?
Ah, yes, thank you, City Council and Mayor Middleton and Mayor Pro Tem Gardner. It's an honor to be here. The process, the process of going through, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
You do.
Yes. Yes, the process of going through this RFP with Marshall Retail Group has been thrilling. As part of this, my role as a joint venture partner has been connecting the Marshall Retail Group to the local community. So basically, opening my role affects many of the vendors that are currently in my shops in both Rancho Mirage and Palm Desert. And the sentiment from the local community artisans has been thrilling. I'm very excited to hopefully see this approved because I know that the next step for Marshall Retail Group involves an onboarding process for all the local businesses to ensure that they're set up for success. And so based on my professional experience, this is an A-class organization that I'm thrilled to be a part of and to raise the caliber of retail at Palm Springs Airport, commensurate with the world-class destination that it is. Thank you.
Right there. Other questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, yeah, if I can continue, thank you. Thank you so much to the Marshall Group, really appreciate that. Thank you for the love letter to Palm Springs. I do think that's clear, at least for me, in seeing the presentation and the proposal. We love Palm Springs too, and we think we can be the best little airport in the world. And I appreciate your help bringing us to the next level, and we especially need your help now. So thank you. I just have a few more questions for staff, if I may.
Okay, thanks, yes. And then I did want to introduce you to Parities.
Sure.
Did you want to hear what their process is with their local vendors? Would that be helpful for you?
It'll be up to Madam Mayor, who's leading the meeting. I just have a short question about the protections for local vendors.
Why don't we do that short question, and then we can decide?
Okay, sounds good.
Go ahead, Councilmember hostage.
Thank you. My question was just about protections for local vendors. So if you have a 10-year agreement with the city Palm Springs or the airport, what are the protections for local vendors to ensure that you retain, you know, vendors and local businesses in the business model? And that might be a question for the city attorney, or we can, you know, ask staff directly instead of the applicants?
Well, it's my understanding that under the contract, if the main concessionaires propose to substitute any sub-vendors or sub-concessionaires, and they would need to seek city approval. And I'm assuming the city would look at the nature of the replacement business with the same eyes as the city council has when selecting these sub-concessionaires.
Thank you, that's helpful, and really appreciate both groups for including our local businesses and such a diverse array, and including the culture of our whole community. Appreciate that. I have a few more questions for staff. One, can you show the employee vending machines and just explain a little bit more about that? I know you went over that quickly, so it looks like there's the before and after. And if you could just explain if that, you know, sufficiently covers, it looks like it's being reduced. So if left is what's current and right is what's proposed, could you just explain a little bit more about that and what the demand is for employees, and if this is sufficient?
Sure, yes. So actually, the image on the left-hand side is currently reduced a little bit more. So it only has two, two machines at it. It has a, all of the drinks, as well as a snack machine. So there's actually only two locations there, but it's that same pay-as-you-go, use your credit card. You open up the refrigerator, you pull out your item that you need, and then you can go. So it's actually a little misleading because there's only two refrigerators there. The great thing about the existing and even what's in the proposal is that airport staff gets a 20% discount. So it's good that our local airport staff is able to utilize the machines and still get a discount.
Thank you. And my comments might be that, you know, it looks like the left-hand side, though it sounds like it's not providing it now, includes fresh food, or at least real food, like lunches, and not just junk food, like chips and soda. And so I'm not an employee at the airport, though I interact with a lot of them. So I would just ask if that's sufficient for our employees. I know it's difficult right now to get food within like 45 minutes from the current operator, just because of demand and limited supply. So would love to see, make sure that we're meeting our staff's needs and not just providing junk food. I've worked jobs where, you know, that's what you get for lunch, is a bag of chips and a soda. We want to make sure we take care of our employees. I have another question for staff about the balance of sit-down and grab-and-go for food. So it looks like a lot of the proposal includes a lot of grab-and-go options and sort of, as opposed to like sit-down opportunities. And it looks to me like customers really want a lot of sit-down. And so I'm just wondering how that was determined, about how much grab-and-go, if there's sufficient places to eat, to sit down and eat with those grab-and-go items. It looks like the left-hand side to the, which is currently empty. It sounded like that will be the empanada area. And so I'm just wondering if there'll be additional seating for those grab-and-go options?
Yes, thank you. So there is additional seating. All of the areas actually do come with seating, especially for the food and beverage locations. We have a total of, I want to say it was a little bit under 450 seats for Parities Food and Beverage, which we currently have over 250 seats. So it's going to dramatically increase the seating.
Thank you. Sorry to the council, I've spent a lot of time at our airport, flying out multiple times a week in the last year or so. And so I'm keenly intimately aware with the current options. I have a question for staff about the blank spaces. So how do you propose that we get the blank spaces addressed? It seems like it's important, at least for the one in front of the security area, which adds to the, you know, effect of our airport and what's visible to visitors. The other ones seem less important. But could you talk a little bit about how we could get this blank spaces addressed? And what we could do there to make that happen quickly?
Sure. Yes, so we are going to work with our two proposed concessionaires to see if they can bring something in, and even work with the local community to see if they can bring in a local company. We definitely want to do this sooner rather than later. So hopefully, in the upcoming months, we allow them a little bit more time to put together a proposal so that they can make sure that all the numbers match out. But we do want to work with them and see about getting something in that space there.
Thank you. Do we know why we didn't receive responses for some of the blank space?
We only know that we received two proposals. So a lot of it has to do with the initial capital investment, that it's going to take a local business to bring in and to get that space set up. We, that's why we kind of suggest for them to work with the larger companies so that they can help and bring in the capital that's needed to get the space set up. the capital that's needed to get the, the space set up.
Thanks. We can discuss with council, but it seems like for me at least, it's important to get those going. If the retailers and concessionaires thinks that that will be beneficial. I just think the brand and the visibility of our airport is really important. And it's a problem for me, some of those blank spaces. And as they look now, it undermines the experience. I have a question about retail two, the pink door. So this is the 162 square foot automated vending zone. So this used to be a Starbucks where many employees of the city would go to get coffee and other visitors as they were waiting for their loved ones to get off airplanes. Was turned into a vending machine area or grab and go, whatever it's called during the pandemic. And I'm just wondering about why that was continued to be the way that it is. I'm concerned about vending in places that it actually can be a re-real experience because that, you know, takes away from staff opportunities or jobs. It takes, it adds to plastic waste and all these things that the city might not want. So I'm just wondering about the decision there for especially retail two being an automated vending zone, which means selling things, but without staff.
I'll turn that over to Aleah with Marshall Retail Group.
Sure. So we actually did approach Starbucks with this opportunity, even though it was slated for retail because I know it was very popular. They declined the opportunity due to the size and the location. We continue to seek other coffee companies and have had interest from others, but no firm commitments. And at this time, what, what worked for us financially in that space in order for us to make the return on that capital investment was the automated retail zone. However, as traffic returns, we're happy to continue to discuss and be flexible with the airport on the offerings. Anything to add, Roddy?
Thank you. That's helpful. I just have personally some concerns, policy concerns about automated vending areas, even though I know that they're profitable and sometimes extremely profitable. I just want to think of the overall experience. For city staff, are there, if there are areas like the blank spaces or other areas where companies are interested in, are there ways that the city can help support, like provide, you know, incentives or provide some of the utilities or ways that we could make it more feasible for some of those spaces to be filled?
Yes, that's possible.
And then I saw the Marshall Group is including like really cool, thank you for including local art and a mural and I heart Palm Springs sign, which is so cool. I was just wondering, I know the, on the side, we're talking for the airport commission and city councils talking about other art investments that we can make to match that as well. Because the brand and the aesthetic of our airport is so important. And obviously it is outdated and needs some love in that department. So thank you to, for bringing that to us. And I have no other, no further questions. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Hostage, for covering so much. That was all really helpful and covered a bunch of my questions, so I appreciate that. And just want to echo, really like the proposals, how much local is in there. And this may be more for staff, but in response to Councilmember Hostage, it was commented that any changes to the, the retail restaurants would be coming back. So I, because I looked for that when I was reading all the materials, so, and I must have missed it. So where is that in the various contracts that we had that are links to online?
So your, your question is, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Sure. Where it says that any changes to who the merchants are would be coming back to us. So I, I looked for that and must have missed it in the attachment. So can you point it out since we have to vote on the contracts tonight? I want, I like to see the language before I vote.
So for clarifications, my understanding that the changes would be going to the airport director, not to city council. If the council would like to change that, you can, but I believe the contract documents currently provide for the changes to go back to the director.
And Councilmember Kors, I would most likely automatically bring that to you all anyway, just to have that discussion before I made any decision.
Is it possible without too much effort to point middle where in the contract documents, that is, language?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I'll, I'll locate that. It's in, it's in the documents, I believe, that were on file with the city clerk, but I'll, I'll track it down.
So they're not what we were sent, or it was on the public agenda links? It's good, it's good for us to review things when contracts, when we're voting on it. I would like, I think that should probably come back to council if there are those changes. I think the local piece is so important to council and councils change and directors change. But I, I think that should come back to council. I was looking, initially I was looking for something that said this much square footage would be local or something like that. But I think as long as it's coming back to council, that would be fine. Because obviously it's not your temp, but we don't want, you know, five years from now to have, you know, 50% more national and less local, right? And I know that's not your goal, that's clear, but you know, how do we make sure for our residents and local businesses, they know there's a process?
Understood. I believe city attorney is still looking, but we can bring that back to you once we have an answer.
Great, thank you. And that's all I had on questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? So I think my big questions I have all been asked and they have to do with emphasizing as much as possible the local connection to our local retailers. We want people to know they're in the Palm Springs Airport, not Sacramento, Oakland or anywhere else. But some of us are traveling enough that we might get confused where we're at at any moment in time. Would the good folks at Parities like to, to offer a few comments in fairness to, to having equal time?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, and thank you to all of the council members. Beg your pardon? Better? Okay, thanks. I'm Pam Brown with Parities Logit Air. Again, thank you, Mayor Middleton, and to all of the council members for the opportunity to participate here and for hearing us a little bit tonight. I appreciate to let you know a little bit more about who we are. First of all, there are three things that Parities is really known for, and that's outstanding customer service, 25 years running, awarded best airport retailer. We're known for authentic delivery of brands, particularly on the food and beverage side, whether that's a local or a national brand. Almost 100 different brands we deliver in airports across the U.S. About half of those or better are local brands and what we do. And the other thing we're known for is how we treat our partners overall. Our ACDBE partners like Steve Menefee, who's on via Zoom tonight, if you have any questions for Steve. He also has a second home here in Palm Springs and is a seasoned operator who's been with us for over 10 years in San Diego. As well, our brand partners are here. If I could, Cliff from Coachella Valley Brewing, Tony from Trio, and Felipe and his daughter Corina from El Marisol are here. We won't take them a whole lot of time with all that good stuff. I did want to point out a couple of solutions that I think you'll be appreciative of. First of all, one of the things we learned in the couple of years we've been running the food and beverage here, and I think we've all learned about the airport in all aspects over the last couple of years as things have really boomed here, is we don't have the infrastructure in place to move and serve the number of people we need. We don't have the technology infrastructure. We can't get the networks up and that sort of thing. The kitchen and back of house in these units is too small for the kind of capacity we're putting out. We're squeezing seating, we're expanding where we can, but the engine that drives it. So what's key to our success here going forward is going to be the complete renovation of what we call a commissary kitchen, what was apparently at one time a catering kitchen behind that big location that's closed. And so that's going to give us the driver that's going to allow us to do prep and a lot of other things that's going to fix our kitchen situations, just like restrooms, right? And general seating and other things are, are challenging sometimes during peaks at the airport. So is this back house thing. So that's going to get us to the next level. Additionally, we're going to drive and maximize seating in all locations, outdoor seating as well for comfort. We know people want to be outside. I mean, it can be over 100 degrees. And if we've got good shade, we'll have state-of-the-art canopies that move and adjust to light and time of day. All of those locations will have misters as well, so we can maximize all of those spaces. So throughput and those types of things are key and key to the customer experience. When it comes to our local partners and our brand partners here, we sign agreements that are tied to our agreement. Not just the letters of intent, but the license and operating agreements that clearly identify all of the business terms ahead of this marriage that we're walking down the aisle that the city is officiating for us as we get closer to contracts being complete. So their future is secure. And again, this is what we're known for. We've never left a brand partner at the altar. We've seen it happen. But Parities doesn't do that. So I think you can feel comfortable with us. And we're happy to share those documents or whatever else, if you guys have any concerns about that. But again, this is, this is a special sauce. This is what makes us unique here is bringing these local brands to life. And even in nine cities, while that is not a local brand, it gives us a methodology in the arcane rules of California's alcoholic beverage controls and their regulations to feature a number of different brands, not just one brand of beer. So if we were to put Coachella Valley Brewing up there and we sell a ton of their beer, we know those guys well, then we, we can't, it has to be their taproom. There's all these other things that go with that. So that gave us the opportunity to actually feature a lot more than the two brands that you saw up there, as well as local distilleries and other craft items and that sort of thing. So I think those are important. The last thing I want to address is what we have come to call the food desert across the street, which is here for employees and others at the airport. So we're implementing, again, getting back to the infrastructure and the networking, we'll have a mobile app, unique to Palm Springs, that has all of our restaurants. We have an app now. Frankly, it's a little clunky. We don't have the connectivity and some other things we need. We'll have that. We're going to expand that app so that all employees, not only at the airport, and that includes airlines and bag handlers and other folks at the airport, we're going to expand that special app that reflects the employee's 20% discount to city and county employees here across the street. They'll be able to use that app to order food. And we're going to work with the airport to come up with a methodology so that they don't have to go through security to get it, whether that's us delivering to the other side or the lockers, you know, with a code you scan or put your code in, you get your hot food out. Ghost kitchens are using that now. We're going to come up with a methodology so that folks who are over here can do that. On the coffee side, to get good, fresh Coachella Valley coffee, we're probably going to have to come up with something, you know, to keep it hot and fresh. It might have to be a little bit more innovative or a little bit more old school, somebody running coffee back and forth. We don't know. But we've got some great solutions that we've been working on. And again, going back to how we landed here two years ago, we spent more than double the $512,000 we committed to, but it's been well worth it for all of us and the education that we've got and knowing what we need to fill the gaps at this airport. No one could be more excited than us. We've waited a long time for this opportunity, well before the first RFP in 2019, to come in and show you what we're really capable of. So thank you for that opportunity.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for, for allowing me to speak.
Oh, please, definitely. Are there any additional comments from council? Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Gardner?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation and all of the good work. It's really exciting to see all of these popular brands from across the Coachella Valley featured here. And especially that it really does show the range that you have across the Coachella Valley and not just in Palm Springs proper. I just wanted to thank you for that and also to just thank incoming council member Jeffrey Bernstein, who's advocated many, many times for local restaurants and businesses to be featured at the Palm Springs Airport. And just wanted to lift him up and thank him for his work and, and advocating on, on that behalf. And thank you, Councilmember Hostage, for asking all of the questions that we all had.
So if there are no other comments, is there a motion? Councilmember Kors?
Sure. Just want to check with staff if they're able to find the language.
Yes, so in section 4.4.3 of the main concession agreement, it's on page eight, item 3A, that talks about the uses of the concession areas needing to remain the same. And that if, for instance, a sub concessionaire vacates the space, then the replacement needs to be approved by the airport director. So again, if the council is interested in having those decisions automatically elevated to either the city manager or a city council level, you can certainly give us that direction and we can incorporate it into the agreement.
Great, thanks. That's true.
I think that was Councilmember Kors' direction, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, and, and I just, for Councilmember Kors and for everyone else on, section 4.5 also lists out the city authority for amendments that are made to these agreements, and all of them go back to the airport director. And I'm, I'm fine with us having some role in reviewing that as well. My only question is the time that we might take up in those discussions? And is it something that we need to have as a larger discussion? Or is it something that would be appropriate to come back on consent and, and pull for larger discretion if necessary?
That's what I was thinking, that it would come on, it would come on consent, just so we're, so council is monitoring it? So that would just be the one change I would make then to this.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. So can you clarify? So it's changing from airport director to city council? Is that the motion or is this suggestion?
And just to be, just to be clear, we're talking about changes in, you know, the entity or the type of use as opposed to other, other, other changes. So those would go to the city councils, I understand the motion.
So can we just get really specific here on that? Mayor Protem, do you want to go first?
Oh, I, I was, my understanding would be the airport director would make a recommendation with his team and that we would review that recommendation on the consent calendar.
Correct.
For a change of use, not a change of local business? Like a change in percentage or a change in share of local business, not the actual business itself? What would, what would come back? What changes?
I was thinking if the business is changed from what's been proposed and any new business or change in business? So the council at least can check to make sure there's the local, the same local, the minimal local mix doesn't go down.
Right. I think our policy interest is the percentage or the share of local business and not the specific local business. And I just find when local business issues come to council, it gets highly political in a way that I don't want to decide which local business it is. And if it's Trio or another one of our favorites, it just gets very difficult. And so I just want to make sure this is narrowed to our policy interest in ensuring there remains an existing local business share, but not specific ones.
Correct. I, I agree. I was initially thinking square footage or something like that. But so the city attorney, what's the best way to word it unless anyone thinks there's a different interest? I don't think council should be picking among, you know, which restaurants, but that we have the same square footage of local restaurants as what we're approving.
Councilmember Kors and Councilmember Hostage will huddle on this. I've, I've just been speaking with Kim from procurement and she and I and the city attorney will huddle on this. And we'll come up with language that's appropriate both for what, what's being proposed today as well as going into the future.
Thank you. And I don't want to delay this because this seems really urgent and important to approve. So will that delay this action?
I don't think so. I think we can turn around pretty quickly.
And just for clarification, in, in developing this language, the council's goal is to make sure that any changes in the percentage of local versus non-local, those would come to the city council, but not the specific identity of, of businesses or types?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That was a very good point, Councilmember Hostage. It's the last thing anyone wants to be getting in the middle of.
If there are no other questions or comments, do we get a motion?
I'll make that motion with that caveat on the language.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kors?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Four I, zero no, motion passes.
Okay. Want to check in with my colleagues. We're making pretty good progress this evening. We still have a few items to go through. Does anyone need a break or shall we continue on? All right. See anyone jumping up to go take a break? The next item is 3B, approve amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement with ALO Palm Canyon LP for development and construction of the ALO Palm Canyon located at 1479 North Palm Canyon Drive, southwest corner of North Palm Canyon and West Stevens Road and disposition of city-owned parcel with assessor parcel number 505-182-010. An approve amendment number one to the purchase and sell agreement to sell successor agency-owned property with assessor parcel number 505-182-004 to ALO Palm Canyon LP for the ALO Palm Canyon project. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton and council. This has to do with an item that was previously approved, but because of certain circumstances, we find ourselves having to do an amendment to this agreement. And you'll recall, this project is located at the southwest corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and Stevens Road. There's a site map and some renderings in the staff report for you in the exhibits. And it provides 71 affordable senior housing units, including 25 permanent supportive units. The developer is West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. And under the terms of the existing agreement, the city has agreed to provide land valued at 1.4 million and financial assistance to support the project in the amount of $2,604,300. This plus all other financing commitments already received by the developer totals $34,362,700. Unfortunately, as I mentioned earlier, this project has been complicated due to increasing construction costs and interest rates. Plus, the state's deadline to dispose of grandfathered successor agency properties by December 31, 2022 also creates a complication. Therefore, these amendments before you are being proposed and recommended for approval. They will allow the sale of the successor agency parcel to the developer and transfer of the city parcel to the developer before the developer provides evidence of all remaining financing. And to clarify, the developer has already secured $34 million in financing. We're talking about the remaining $2.7 million that they're seeking. That is technically, we've asked for verification that those funds have been awarded. They've applied for them and they expect to hear back on those funds by January of next year. It will, the amendments will also allow for the disbursement of $480,000 of pre-development financing. Again, before the developer provides evidence of the remaining financing needed for the project. So in regards to the increased expenses, the project costs increase for building the actual structure, site work, interest expenses and insurance. And again, this comes to approximately $2.7 million of additional cost. And a little more detail on the funds that they've already applied for. This includes the existing fund source that has already awarded funding to them. They recognize the increase in construction costs and interest rates. So the state of California's Housing Accelerator Program is offering supplemental funding, which the developer, West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, has applied for. The other piece of additional funding they've applied for is with the County of Riverside. And that is for the permanent local housing allocation funds, which the County of Riverside has indicated they could support this. We just need the final approval to verify that, that they will award this to the developer. Again, notification of these awards is expected by January. But in this, in the draft amendments, we've asked the developer to provide the additional award information, evidence of additional awards by March 1, 2023. In regards to the Surplus Lands Act requirements, the agreements contemplated closing escrow for the sale of the city and the successor agency property before December 31, 2022, as required, again, by the Surplus Lands Act. And the reason for this is one of the properties is a successor agency property, which for one reason or another, the state did not grant exemptions to for the former redevelopment properties producing affordable housing. So this deadline kind of forces our hand to try and close now. Otherwise, we go through the Surplus Lands Act process that we'll actually talk about in the next item. The amendments will allow the escrow to close before December 31, 2022 by deferring the requirement for the evidence of the additional financing until March 1, 2023. In regards to the disbursement of the funds, the financial assistance was structured to be released after certain milestones were achieved by the developer. Getting back to the providing evidence of financial feasibility, when we receive that in full, under our current agreement, we've agreed, the city has agreed, to provide $480,000 to reimburse the developer for pre-development costs. The city also, after that, would provide $1.2 million for construction and at 50% completion of the project, $600,000. And at issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the city would disburse $120,000. As part of this deal structure, the developer will be purchasing the redevelop, former redevelopment agency property for $900,000. And the way redevelopment dissolution works is that all the taxing entities get a portion of that $900,000. And we have agreed with the developer initially in the first agreement to allow them to utilize the share that comes back to the city, which is estimated to be $204,000. That, however, won't be due to the developer until 30 days after we've actually settled with the other taxing entities for the former redevelopment agency. And another complication, just to note, has been that the properties are owned by two separate entities, the city and the successor agency. To obtain building permits, individual parcels must be owned by the same entity. Transferring the parcels to the developer will allow them to secure the building permits. Other funding entities will also require the developer secure building permits before they disburse funds to them. I should also note, the amendments include a clawback provision that if the developer is unable to obtain the additional funding commitments by March 31, 2023, the city may purchase back the successor agency parcel and the developer would be required to give back the city parcel. Again, West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation has secured a good 90% of all the funding needed for this project. And really, the sticking points, as I've mentioned, are the timing and the need to provide, technically provide that evidence of financing that we are proposing be deferred until March 1. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, council.
There are questions for Jay. Not seeing any questions, and I didn't have any. If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there? We got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gardner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Four I, zero no, motion carries.
We will move on to our next item. 3C, approve a resolution of the City of Palm Springs adopting an inventory report of excess exempt and non-exempt surplus land pursuant to government code 505-69. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Surplus Land Act requires that, honored before December 31 of each year, the cities, the counties submit a central inventory of all surplus land and submit that inventory report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The inventory does not include properties the city uses for city business like fire stations, police stations, parks and city halls. And the city has already declared one property as surplus, which is the, known as the Rimrock property that was part of the GRIT settlement. And it was sold by the city to the Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancy for $480,000. The city has declared two properties as exempt surplus. And this has to do with the item we just heard on the ALO Palm Canyon project, where the one city-owned property is exempt because it is going to be used for affordable housing. The other property, the successor agency property, is exempt until December 31, 2022. And there are no other exemptions for housing for successor agency or redevelopment agency parcels. So that's why in the last item, we were hoping for the approval to close that escrow by December 31. The remainder of the properties on the inventory report are currently excess properties. Excess properties are those that are beyond the city's foreseeable needs but have not yet been declared surplus. Surplus is land that is no longer necessary for a city's use and has been officially declared surplus by the city or governing body. Excess land must first be declared surplus or surplus exempt before being sold or disposed of. So while it's important to, oh, please. I just wanted to note also that if surplus land is disposed for residential purposes with more than 10 units of housing, that resulting project is required to provide 15% of the preferred, of the proposed units as affordable. And it's also important to understand that if the city does not comply with the Surplus Lands Act, it would be subject to a penalty of 30% of the final sale price of land sold. That's in violation of the act. Essentially, the process for declaring properties as surplus is the council would declare them as surplus. And then staff would issue a notice of availability. That would be available for 60 days. And then if a successful proposer, buyer or developer is selected, staff is obligated to negotiate with that developer for 90 days. So there's 150 days in the process to dispose of surplus properties. The state also prescribes that affordable housing be prioritized for surplus properties. And that if there's more than one affordable housing proposal, the affordable housing proposal that proposes the deepest level of affordability, meaning serving the most low-income residents, that that project would receive priority. And, yes?
Couple of questions for you because we have had some inquiries and we've also had some comments that seem to be quite misinformed. Excess property. On all of these properties that we have listed as excess, do we have any potential sales or buyers for those properties at this point?
At this point, no.
Right. So no one has come forward on any of this?
Well, and some of them may or have, have not been put out for sale because of this process.
Okay. And those properties that are listed as excess, if we were to try to dispose of them, they must first remain as an excess property. Is that correct?
That is correct. They must remain as an excess property. The next step would be for the council to dispose of them, to declare them as surplus and then go through the process of the 150-day process of soliciting interest for those properties.
And, and to be clear, that declaration of surplus property would occur at an open session meeting of the city council.
You anticipated my next question. Thank you, city attorney. So those are my questions, comments. Councilmember Coors?
I may be saying the same thing, just in another way, just based on some of the outreach I had. So all we're doing tonight is accepting an inventory. We're not making any recommendation. We're not discussing anything regarding any of these properties. It's, it's a simple inventory, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're just sharing what will happen in the future, just so the public understands that? Because there was some confusion with some members of the public, as the mayor pointed out. That's all we're doing tonight. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate the information. So I do think, I know that the state requires this list in this format, which is, I think, not very helpful for the public to actually understand what parcels these are. And so I'm just wondering if the city could create either a map for this inventory or something online or another category that has a description? Like, you know, the parcel next to the Palm Springs Fire Station 1, right? Or whatever these all are, because I think it's not clear. And then it's even difficult for me as a member of the council to look at conflicts, right? I know staff help with that, but for me to actually wrap my head around what all of these mean. And I think the public is highly interested in which are considered surplus land under this inventory because it then means where we could, people or the city or others could develop open space or affordable housing or parks and rec or you name it, right? And so this is important information for the public and I don't think this format gets that information to the public. So if you or Teresa have ideas about how to give it to the public in a way that they might be able to digest and understand and it's readable?
Yes, absolutely. We have great GIS staff. I know they can plot this and we could link it to our webpage and everyone would be able to see the locations of these properties and evaluate them accordingly.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Yes. I so move. There we go.
We got a motion. We got a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Four I, zero no, motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is 3D. Proposed ordinances adopting and amending the 2022 California Building Standards Code. Madam Clerk, do I need to read the entire paragraph?
I think after approval, I'll read the title.
Very good. May we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of council, the item before you is a request for an update to the city's building code. In terms of the building code itself, the California Building Standards Code is updated on a regular basis, exactly every three years is when it comes forward. The proposed 2022 code will become effective on the 1st of January. And so consequently, the state requires local governments to adopt the most recent edition of the California Building Standards Code. The process for adoption is a little bit different than what you typically see for the adoption of code items. It begins first with a legislative item, which is what you have before you this evening. And then we will progress to a public hearing item, which is tentatively scheduled for January the 12th of 2023. In terms of the amendments themselves, we are adopting the standard California building code. However, cities may amend the building code to impose more restrictive standards based on local conditions. We adopted a number of amendments back in the 2019 cycle, including the requirement for residential air conditioning and also standards for wildfire risk areas and others. And we just want to let you know that amendments from previous cycles are being carried forward with the proposed update. In addition, we are proposing just one amendment to the 2022 code, and that's relative to the fire code. The fire department has requested that for projects or developments with automatic vehicle gates, that they be required to have both a strobe switch and the NOx key or NOx box electric switch. And so that's one proposed amendment that we have for the 2022 cycle that's before you this evening. In terms of future actions that we're considering but don't have ready to go yet, we are looking at adopting a standard grease interceptor waiver process and the criteria for approval of those waivers. As was indicated in public testimony this evening, we are also looking at adopting an energy reach code for commercial new construction. If you'll recall, this discussion started first with cannabis facilities. And so that's something that we have put together and anticipate coming before you in the first quarter of next year. And then in addition to that, we're also looking at an energy reach code for remodeling of residential buildings that were built before 2011. And so those are some additional actions that are not before you this evening, but we do anticipate having those before you here soon. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions you might have. We have on hand our building official, Mr. Alberto Grudia. We also have Jason Loyah, our acting fire chief, and Taylor Tople, our fire marshal, ready to respond to any questions you might have. That concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor, and with that, we'll entertain your questions.
Thank you. Let me start, Flynn, and thank you for a very strong staff report. This is essentially the adoption of California state standards by our city. And is not, and while we love doing it, this is not one of those times where we're breaking new ground. Am I correct?
You are correct. We are not breaking new ground.
Well, we'll find other opportunities to do that. Other questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question just about notices that we might give for updated building standards. I think I raised at the last meeting that though we may have amended the code to require air conditioning for tenants, many landlords and tenants may not know about that change. So I know we have an extensive public process, but could you just detail if notice like that will be included? Or if it's something we may need to add, like the city sending out a letter notice to, you know, properties or landlords that are registered or some other solution to get notice out?
What we might do in response to that question is indicate on the city website, particularly on the Building and Safety Department webpage, changes to our code or local amendments as a way to put that notice out. It's a little bit difficult to notify every property owner of changes to the building code. Staff does do that when we have customers come to our front counter or when we receive questions via email, that they're very good about notifying both builders, contractors, property owners about changes in the code that they would need to adhere to as part of the local amendments that we adopt. But again, in response to your question, what we might do is put forth a specific webpage with those updates.
Thank you. I think we could also think through noticing, you know, legal aid organizations or the Fair Housing Council, which we contract with to represent landlords and tenants. Maybe there's a few other organizations that could help with that notice, especially if we're not noticing tenants. But that's helpful. I don't think we need to take that action now and we can think, think it through as we go through that process, but would love some recommendations there as we do.
Certainly, and when we come back on January the 12th, we can include those notifications that we'll be doing.
Excuse me. Other questions or comments? Seeing no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Second. Councilmember Coors, second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Middleton, did you make the motion?
Did.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Four yeses and zero noes, motion passes.
I think you need to read.
And I have to read the title. Ordinance adopting and amending the 2022 California Building Standards Code, Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations, the 2022 California Fire Code, the 2022 California Building Code, the 2022 California Residential Code, the 2022 California Plumbing Code, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, the 2022 California Electrical Code, the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, the 2022 California Energy Code, the 2022 California Existing Building Code, the 2022 California Historical Building Code, and adopting and amending the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3E, review by City Council of decisions of boards and commissions and other options for review and consideration of matters by city boards and commissions. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, council members. This item was requested at one of the recent council meetings during council requests for future items. The item before you presents an opportunity for the city council to provide direction to city staff and the city attorney's office with regard to review of decisions by the city's boards and commissions. The Palm Springs Municipal Code currently provides, with one notable exception, that decisions of boards and commissions are reviewable by the city council. In order to implement that, at least with regard to planning and zoning decisions, the planning staff currently provides notice to the city council of planning and zoning decisions, as well as decisions by the Historic Preservation Board. The question before the city council is whether the city council would like to extend that to other decisions. Notably, the current municipal code doesn't provide for review of decisions by the Administrative Appeals Board. The Administrative Appeals Board makes decisions with regard to cannabis citations and vacation rental citations, as well as some other code enforcement citations. The code does not provide for review of that administrative appeal board decision. Instead, if somebody wishes to challenge an AAB decision, they are required to file a writ petition in Superior Court. So the question is whether the city council wants to, A, extend the planning department's practice of providing notice to other boards and commissions, and also whether the city council would like to amend the process for the finality of AAB decisions. Another option, of course, as council has discussed in the past, would be to provide for either some or all decisions of code enforcement matters to be appealed to a neutral third-party hearing officer. So that's the item before you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Are there comments that we want to jump into? Mayor Protem Garner.
Sure, maybe it's a combination. I'm just curious if we can get a little bit more information about kind of pros and cons of having a hearing officer versus having an administrative appeals board? I mean, initially, just having an administrative appeals board of local folks, I think, is helpful in many ways, but I can also see how that could be, cause some bias as well. But I'm just curious if there's staff recommendations on that item, that portion of this specifically?
That's a good question, Mayor Protem Garner. I will tell you from my experience in several jurisdictions, there are a few benefits of having a hearing officer. One is they're generally trained in the law, either current lawyers or sometimes retired judges. And so they are able to serve kind of as their own legal counselor. Right now, the city attorney's office provides legal counsel and support to our AAB to serve as kind of the legal mind of the AAB, even though we have a few lawyers on that board. When you have a hearing officer, the hearing officer themselves are usually lawyers, and so they have that ability to provide the legal analysis. You're right, the appeals board does have sort of a local flavor that has pros and cons. The pros are they understand the community, they understand kind of the issues. The cons are there are sometimes a potential for appeal board members to feel that maybe they need to be or they should be lenient on people who have actually violated our municipal code. With a hearing officer, there isn't that temptation usually. So those are the primary pros and cons of having a hearing officer versus having an appeals board process.
Thank you, and just on that, I'm, I know that our appeals board really enjoys doing this and takes it very seriously, so I don't want them to feel that we are necessarily dissatisfied with what they're doing. We're just trying to understand what the best process is moving forward with these, these types of issues. And especially because, you know, we won't always have a dead, necessarily have a dedicated group of folks who want to be on this commission, so it might be helpful to have a third party. I actually don't, I'm not sure where I stand on that particular part. But I, I do think that it would be helpful for us to be able to review things that come to the Administrative Appeals Board, regardless of whether or not it's an independent officer or a board. This is, I know that we've had a couple of folks who commented on this today, but it's not the first time that people have said that they've been upset with an outcome. I also don't necessarily want us as a council to be inundated with, with these appeals, but there does seem a missing piece here when, when these citations are extremely detrimental to, to the folks who are receiving them.
Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo everything Mayor Protem said, including, I'm not sure, on the hearing officer versus keeping the board. But I, I do think, as we discussed that, and there are pros and cons. You know, sometimes it's hard when it's in a small city, right? You can be, they're your neighbors and people you know. And, you know, for, especially people who aren't trained, maybe there's some extra training we may want to do. You know, they're sort of a trier of fact, not sort of, you know, they're not judge and jury. They're sort of the jury, they're, you know, of the facts what, you know, do the facts justify the penalty? There have been some issues where, you know, and I know this came up during COVID, right, where there are fines levied by code enforcement based on our direction, and people came to us, and we said we weren't going to reduce them, and then they went to them and they got reduced. That just caused, you know, we don't want people going around different bodies to try and get different results. And a hearing officer might help there. But the other thing that would help is, and I do agree, any final decision by an advisory board and commission, and I put the AAB then in that, should be able to be pulled up to council for review, since we are the policy body, and a lot of even what goes to them is policy. And I think a way to address, I don't think anyone currently on council would be just pulling up lots of things, but that could happen. And so one, one option, although we don't want to delay things, would be that it can be pulled up to the next council meeting to see if a majority wants to hear it, right? So you just don't ever run into one council member pulling up lots of things. So that's just one idea I want to throw out for council to consider, right? Where it would come to council first, like we do with agenda items, where a majority had to say, no, we'd like to review that. And then it would come to the following meeting as a way to avoid that concern, I think would be, would be helpful. And I think it definitely has helped with planning, right? That we get, we and also the public, it goes on the website, have 15 days' notice before something is final, so they can reach out to us and ask us to pull it, or we can pull it. And I, so I think which, anything that's final, we should do that way. So I support that piece and open to hearing with the other two members of council think on the hearing officer.
Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like just more information, I think, to make this decision about a hearing officer than, including best practices by other jurisdictions. I agree with Mayor Protem Garner, there's pros and cons. And as Councilmember Coors stated, you know, we've gone through this discussion a few times. And there are pros and cons, and I'd like to know what most jurisdictions do. I think, you know, and it's the debate about having a jury of your peers versus a judge trial. And there's, again, pros and cons to that. And, you know, I was persuaded last time that there might be more bias of a hearing officer towards the city when they're, you know, continually doing these hearings and the city is employing them essentially. You know, I, I just think it's something worthy of more discussion with analysis, maybe of what is the problem we're trying to solve. But I do support the other proposals. I would, I think it's interesting to, I agree with Councilmember Coors, your proposal of having majority of council. I think we'd want to protect against political favors, or, right? We want to have an insulated, protected, fair process, or require to provide due process. So we want to make sure that's protected and not political, and that's my concern. I also think we'll be inundated. So I think that's why we didn't do this before when we debated it, is because we didn't want every single decision to come to us. So, you know, I think majority of council would be good. There definitely are some, you know, I asked for, I know Councilmember Coors and I had asked for summaries of what was happening in those hearings, because we often weren't even getting updated about what the results were or what outcomes were. So, you know, it's sometimes there's unfair results, which you would get in any system. So I think having majority of council would work for me. But I'm not prepared to discuss or decide the hearing officer versus appeals board without more information like data about what we're seeing, what's the resolution of our cases, what are the best practices? Do most cities of our size use a hearing officer? You know, other considerations. Obviously, there's staff that are involved that are experts about this more than us, because we're very insulated and separated from the hearing process. And, you know, these don't come to us.
So I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said, because I'm in agreement. I do have a question on one point, and that is whether or not it should be two or three people that would make a request for something to be pulled up from A, from the appeals board. My, my concern with it being three is I know that you might be pulling it up just saying, I think we should hear this. But there is an implication. I think we should hear this, but there is an implication when a majority's already said, let's hear this, that we've come to a conclusion, and that's not at all what we want to do. And so, but I'm, whatever the majority here wants to go, I will go with. Councilmember Coors?
No, thank you for that point. I mean, one option is, for that part, start with two, and if council in the future sees too many things coming and wants to change it, you can change it to three, right? Or vice versa. I mean, we do agenda items by three, too, it doesn't mean we're going to vote for the item, right? That often happens, as we know, so I'm good with either, I just, as well.
Councilmember Hostic, or Mayor Protem, either one of you want to weigh in?
Sure, yeah, I like three, just because I think, again, we can just distinguish that it's not about our view, but rather that we think it's worthy of discussion. And I think, too, even when, so far this year, as we've been doing this process of deciding what should be on the agenda, I know that, I think each of us at one point has said, I would like to hear this, but I want to clarify that I don't necessarily agree. And so I feel we can probably do that as well, if someone feels strongly, that they need to be clear that, with their stance.
So, I just want to get this said, and I know for the overwhelming majority of folks that we're going to interact with, they know it, but when we're hearing these appeals from the appeals board, we're acting in a semi-judicial responsibility. And you may have been someone that we worked with on any number of very close issues. We're going to have to be guided by the facts and by the law, and not by any of the other interests that might be out there, other than what are the facts and what is the law when it comes time for us to hear these appeals. All right, so councilmember Hostic?
Thank you. So could staff or as councilmembers sort of explain what the process would be now? I know we have applicants in the room, or appellants and others. So just explain, like, what would be the appeal process, and who would it be available to? I'm just thinking through, like, the impact, because I know we care about equity, and who has access to council, and whose concerns get heard, and I want to make sure it's fair, or like fairly noticed to applicants or appellants who are appealing, you know, these hearing decisions, that they would know that council could take this action, or, right? How that would work, so it doesn't become a, you know, boys' club of, you know, who has access to request it, if that makes sense.
So I've heard that there's a request, a desire on the part of the council to have the ability to pull up items for review. If the council would also like to extend the right of, for instance, an appellant or some other third party, maybe a neighbor or somebody, to also appeal an AAB decision to the city council, we'd certainly like to hear direction from you on that. Depending on what direction we get from the city council, we can provide notice to the current appellants, and then depending on the scope of the city council's amendment of our municipal code, in other words, if you only want to make it prospective, or if you want to make it retroactive to a certain date for decisions, we can bring that to the city council, and we would provide notice to appellants in conformance with that direction that the council gives. Going forward, I would imagine we would be diligent about providing notice to appellants with regard to any potential right of appeal to the city council as part of our noticing of the appeals.
Councilmember Coors?
Thank you for those points. I think, from my perspective, I don't think, you know, whether the person who, you know, doesn't like the result, or a neighbor doesn't like the result, they don't get to put it on the agenda, right? So they can reach out to us, to ask us if we would pull it up, and we'd have notice of it. So I think making sure maybe at the hearings, right, both in writing and verbally, we let folks know that, you know, council does have the authority to pull these up within 15 days of notice, and you can always reach out to council members if you want to make such a request.
And I would like it to be a process where you cannot come directly to us, you have to go through staff to make the request.
You make the request to staff, and staff would then go to us to say someone's made the request, and then we'd have 15 days to ask for it to come? I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, we should just figure out, maybe staff can figure out exactly how that will logistically work, I'm fine with that. Because if someone reached out to us, we're going to reach out, and we want it, we'll just reach out to staff, too, so. So however, the process will be most efficient, is great.
My concern is I don't want individuals lobbying each one of us individually outside of the hearing process. Mayor Protem?
I think it would be, for this, would be helpful to clearly indicate that process and state that specifically, because of the role that we would be playing. And, well, this is for the city attorney, actually, I mean, we're supposed to disclose any conversations that we have with anyone who is before us in a public hearing, so since we would be acting in our quasi-judicial role, would we also need to convey in the public meeting if anybody had, we had spoken with anyone about the issue?
Yes, you're absolutely right, you would have to.
Thank you.
So have we given, councilmember Hostic?
Thank you. So I agree, I think staff can just recommend a fair process that would be equitable and provide sufficient notice, and provide an avenue for the public to know about this, and let us know. I, or just include it. I mean, I'm always fearful of not, you know, people always have, I think, the right to reach out to us, that's our job, especially if it's in our district or something like that, but I agree, it's concerning, because we're serving as a judge essentially in that role, and so people need to understand that. So, yeah, I think staff probably can recommend a good process for us.
I think based on the discussion direction you've given us, we can bring forward something to council.
Do we need to vote on this this evening, or was this the direction that you needed, Mr. Ballinger?
I don't believe we need a vote, I think we can take direction based on the discussion that's been had.
Very good. If there's nothing else, then we will move to item 3F.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, could we just take five? I know we're almost done, but.
If we could limit it to five, please.
We'll be right back.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Madam Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Thank you. With that, we will reconvene the City Council meeting. The last item that we have is three F. Potential city action to increase diversity of our city boards, commissions, and committees. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item was also requested by the City Council a couple of months ago. And the City Council asked the City Attorney's Office and City Clerk's Office to research ways that we might be able to increase diversity on our boards and commissions. The City Clerk's Office conducted a search on the City Clerk's listserv through the League of California Cities and really found that other cities didn't have any other ideas, but in fact, other cities were asking the same questions. And so some other communities asked us when we come to some decisions whether we could share our ideas with them. The City Attorney's Office was asked to look at a couple of recent trial court decisions with regard to state laws that mandated diversity in terms of gender on private boards. There's also a similar law that was recently passed that mandates more diversity on the part of appointed public agency boards that isn't necessarily applicable to a city our size, but is maybe a model that the city might want to consider applying even though it's not necessarily required by the state statute. Unfortunately, a couple of trial court decisions arising out of the private board diversity statute in California would render that type of diversity statute somewhat suspect under equal protection case law as it currently exists. However, as part of our research of that state statute for public agency boards, we did come across an interesting study that was conducted in the San Diego region that attempted to look at some of the factors that cause a lack of diversity on boards and commissions. And so we've indicated in our staff report a few of the findings of that report. Specifically, the report indicated that factors such as a strong reliance on informal social networks to secure nominations to boards and commissions can reduce diversity. Informal preference for professionals from related industries can reduce diversity on boards and commissions. Disenfranchisement of large populations who are not U.S. citizens can also reduce the diversity on local boards and commissions. With regard to that particular factor, it bears noting that the City Council did in 2020 amend our municipal code ordinance to remove the requirement that our boards and commissioners be voting citizens and actually expanded our eligibility to not just residents of the city, but also those who work and go to school within the city of Palm Springs. So the City Council has taken action with regard to that item or that factor. And then finally, the report indicated that a lack of pay or little pay for members serving on boards and commissions when there are significant time commitments can also contribute to lack of diversity on boards and commissions. I've included a copy of that report as part of the staff report for the council's review. And that concludes my staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for staff? I can't, everybody's trying to figure out who's going to go. So let me change the order around and go first a little bit on this one. One of the great opportunities I've had in the last few years is serving on the CalPERS Board of Administration. And CalPERS is not subject to the restrictions that this court case has placed on our ability to continue to use our economic voting power in proxy votes and in other places to argue that diversity matters. And we've been joined by literally thousands of public and private investors in making it very clear that private corporate boards need to reflect the communities that they live in that they work in. Those efforts are really working. I was in October at the National Association for Corporate Directors Annual Conference in Washington DC. It was almost equally divided between men and women. There was an extremely large number of African Americans present. The presence of Latino board members was not anywhere close to what it needs to be. And many corporate boards are still struggling with whether or not to make clear that LGBTQ individuals should be a protected group that need representation on your corporate board. So we may have some disagreements from time to time as to how we go about achieving these kinds of balances, but that we are interested in balance and that we are making diversity a value in our boards and commissions is something I absolutely applaud and think we need to continue to do. Mayor Protim Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your comments about that. You know, I think we've talked often about actually tracking who's on our boards so that we can see what the breakdown is. And I think we know that for gender, but we don't know for other categories. And not just with race and ethnicity and gender, and sexual orientation, but also for age. And we've started to indicate which district someone is in, but we've not looked more closely at the breakdown of that either, although I think that's gotten significantly better since we moved to districts, since we do have that. But I think one of the things that has been the most helpful has been just personal outreach. The problem, of course, is that there is still bias there when it's personal outreach. But I know many of the younger folks and people of color that we've gotten on our commissions in the last three years, I've personally reached out to and requested that they be on, and I know others have also done that. So I would, I'd like to see what we can do in terms of engaging with these different groups in a more neutral way so that we aren't bringing in that particular influence as council members, but still doing the work that's needed to meet people where they are throughout the city, going to events that we don't normally go to. I'm thinking about what we've been doing lately with our HR department and going to Village Fest and engaging with communities there, advertising in Spanish and English for some of the jobs which are more likely to get employees that speak primarily Spanish, things like that. So I think we already are implementing practices that are helpful and encouraging diversity. And I think we should continue to think creatively about where we go to do that. And some initially might be places where folks are already involved in some other social areas, right? Churches are always places, if you're involved in church, you might be more willing to be involved with the city. Or I think of social clubs like the Sunshine Sisters, right? Maybe some Sunshine Sisters want to get involved with the city since they're now active in the social club. So we might want to think about things like that, where people are already starting to become more engaged in their community, just not with the city government.
Councilmember Kors.
Thank you. You know, in my time on council, the year we had the most applications and the most diversity was when we were doing all the meetings around districting. And that was an opportunity. And I know Mayor Protim Garner was on that committee, and Mayor Middleton and I were, the council liaisons in several meetings, and, you know, at least two that I can come off the top of my head, of our new commissioners came from getting, talking to folks at those and saying, you clearly want to be engaged. Let's have coffee. Let's talk about what the boards and commissions are. So I think a couple of things. One is doing that kind of outreach, right, to, you know, PTAs, our community centers, right? Like just having a much bigger annual effort, you know, sending out press releases and sending it to OnePS is great, but it's not reaching most people that way. And so I think, I think if staff could come up with actually an outreach plan that we do the same every year, and then we learn each year what's working, what's not, I think that could be really helpful. I mean, we did one districting meeting in Spanish, right? And so folks who aren't primarily English speakers but could still be on a board and commission don't even know that that's an opportunity unless we're doing that kind of outreach. Another thing that was brought up, you know, on demographics, I agree, it would also be great to have a sense of people who rent versus own property, right? And people who are working, you know, full-time versus those who are not. Just, we really want that diversity on our boards and commissions because we want the full breadth of our residents' viewpoints to be heard. And so I think that would be important. I also think, you know, we get, you know, typically, I think it's $50, you know, for C-VAG when we do go to a meeting. And I think we should do that for our boards and commissioners. I think we should show that we value what they do because people are going to be more inclined to want to do it. And for some people, you know, that really makes a difference if they have to have childcare, which we should have at board and commission meetings as well. But at least in the meantime, as we're working on those issues, right, it would just help people be able to do this who might not otherwise be able to do a meeting a month or in planning two meetings a month. And it's not a very large amount of money for the city, and I think people are doing city work. So I'd like us to consider, you know, consider that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hostic.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you to all for sharing your experiences. Thank you to the mayor for bringing the CalPERS experience at that level into this conversation. By the way, it's a really good staff report, so thank you for that. And thank you for all the detailed research into the case law and into what other cities are doing and into barriers. I just thought it was really proactive research. So thank you for that. I agree. So I think we, I'd like us to consider adopting a policy like AB 931 for the city. I would like to see some sort of policy that's written. I think it was completely unacceptable where we had a working group for vacation rentals. I mean, you name the issue where we had, you know, very few people of color, very few women, just zero, you know? It's not acceptable, and we're just never going to make good policy as a democracy without hearing from all the voices. And so we're just, you just don't hear all of the impacts and all the considerations, and that's how our democracy works. And so I would like to see a policy like that, so it's not just up to who's on council. I would also like to see a stipend. I agree. I think actually C-VAG gave us a raise. It was $75, and now I think it's $100 for executive committee maybe that we get. And just thank you to Councilmember Kors for always raising the childcare issue. Right, it might cost someone $50 in childcare to attend a two- or three-hour council-commission meeting. I would also like to see childcare at council meetings and commission meetings because if you, you know, it's very, very hard to find someone to watch your kids for two or three hours or more. Sometimes those meetings are very, very long, and I think it's important for democracy, and the city should be providing it. And I'll keep asking for it, even though people say I'm asking for my own childcare, which I am not for my baby. I just know how much of a barrier that is to having people participate. And if we're not hearing parents' voices about parks and rec and you name it, you know, we're again missing out. I'd really like to see the city hire a diversity equity and inclusion officer or a consultant or a contractor to start to do this work more broadly. We've sort of done it. I'm really proud of how well we've done it over the last few years. One of the CVRA working group recommendations was to collect and track the data about boards and commissions. We never implemented that, but I think it would be really good policy. I liked the suggestions in the staff report that the city could conduct a study to determine the current and historical composition of the boards. I think we'll be shocked with the results of that. And I'd like to see us act on the results too by having someone at the city, either internally or externally, who can, you know, identify more factors, because there's probably more factors that we're missing. So I think that's it. I love that, oh, and just to Councilmember Kors, the outreach plan, I think is really good, and that's why we had hired someone doing outreach for communities that weren't frequently included by the city. And that was really, really effective. So I think either, you know, having that internal with the staff or externally with a DEI officer to plan for would be really effective in continuing that because we really saw that drop off after we, you know, stopped doing those CVRA meetings.
Thank you, and thanks to all of my colleagues. One of the things when it comes to data that I think we need to do as we move forward with these efforts is to truly understand the demographics of Palm Springs. We have a very unique demographic to our city. We're disproportionately, particularly in the adult population, male in a fashion that is significantly greater than most any city. And we are, as we know, disproportionately older in Palm Springs than many other communities. We need to be realistic about who lives in our city and who's available to participate. That doesn't take away from any of our efforts to reach out to a broader population. I think it's also important as we're doing this that we continue to reinforce to everyone who's serving on boards and commissions how much we appreciate the work they're doing and how critical it is that the work that they are doing. Councilmember Kors.
Yeah, thank you. And I've brought this up a couple of times, and I think at the last meeting as well, but this reminds me to bring it up again. You know, we have HR working on, right, diversity, equity, inclusion issues for hiring city clerk on boards and commissions. And I just think we need one person that they'll do it, who's in charge of it, who's thinking about it every day, because that's how we're actually going to have it really part of this organization. And whether that's a staff person, which the new council can discuss at the budget mid-year, or the city manager believes it could be half of someone's time to start. But if there's not someone who's really focused on this, it just, it lies in different areas, and it's not, doesn't become part of everything we do, which is what we committed to do in our strategic planning. And so I'm sure someone on here will continue to bring that up, but I wanted to raise it because this is a great example, right? You know, you have so many different pieces who do pay attention to it, but we need one person who's really making sure it's part of everything we do and who owns it. So, thank you, Mayor.
So one of the things I definitely heard, I think, from all four of us is a desire for stipends of some sort for our boards and commissions. As I understand it, this was an item for direction to go to staff, not one for us to vote on this evening. Staff, do you have the direction that you need?
I believe we do have sufficient direction. If the council would like to identify any other issues, you're certainly welcome to, but we have direction to bring some back to council in the near future.
Are there any other comments on this issue? And we have gotten to public comment for non-agenda items. Are there any public comments for non-agenda items, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have some speakers here for non-agenda items. The first speaker, Ken Hendricks. Is he still here? Ken Hendricks. Michael Joseph Pickens, you have two minutes.
Michael Joseph Pickens. This is my State of Israel Judaism response. In Judaism, there are two ways to automatically go to hell: adultery and lashon hara, or evil tongue slander or gossip. In lashon hara, spreading a bad name, three people die: the one who does the gossip, the one who listens, and the one who gossip is about. The State of Israel would go anywhere in the world to confront a threat to spiritual Jewish morality and sovereignty. Just wars via biblical Judaism and rabbinic Judaism battle against the infidel in the name of the true faith, against inhabitants of Cana and the seven nations, nations outside the borders of the land of Israel. Satanism is considered a threat, expulsion or war. Bible law prescribed war only against idolatrous nations who were in Israel's midst lest they lead you into doing all the abhorrent things that they have done for their gods. Deuteronomy 20:18. The land is considered a gift from God to the Jews, and you shall take possession of the land and settle in it, for I have given the land to you to possess it. Numbers 33:53. Lord, your God is giving you as a heritage; you shall not let a soul remain alive. Daniel Hartman writes, morality of war is found in Deuteronomy 21-18. He must first offer peace. If it responds peacefully and lets you in, all the people present there shall serve you at forced labor, slavery. If it does not surrender to you but would join battle with you, you shall lay siege to it, and when the Lord, your God, delivers it into your hands, you shall put all of its mails to the sword. You may, however, take as your booty the women, the children, the livestock, and everything in the town, all it spoils, and enjoy the use of the spoil of your enemy, which the Lord, your God, gives you. War against towns which lie very far from you. Deuteronomy 20:15. This aggression or conquest are the spoils or for power. To God of all, I say, no, I refuse. I do not consent to expulsion or war. I do not consent to slavery. I do not consent to be put to death. I do not consent to give up my property.
Your time is up.
I believe in the Abraham Accords and with Jordan's blessings. United Arab Emirates can herald agreement with Israel in the Middle East, even with Iran, Afghanistan, Africa, and Russia.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
So it is written, so it is sealed by the blood of my heart, so it shall be.
Our next speaker is Angie Lentz. She not here? Brad Lumdahl. You have two minutes.
Hi there. Thank you, mayors and members of the City Council. I'm just going to read what I wrote because we only have two minutes, and I want to sort of get through things quickly. My name is Brad Lumdahl. I live at 2011 South Brentwood Drive on the Takweet Creek Golf Course. And I'm here to speak to you today about significant safety concerns I have regarding golf balls that have been hitting my home and landing on my property. Since personally hit home a year ago, this problem has really impacted me and my husband's quality of life and left me feeling really sort of helpless and depressed. In this bag here, I have 33 golf balls that I collected that had either hit the house or landed on the property just in the last few months. Many of these were collected in the late summer with very few golfers. This does not include numerous that have landed on the property and which people have jumped my fence to collect, which happens often. For example, I had collected about 50 additional golf balls prior to this batch that had hit the house or landed on the property over a few-month period, but I placed them on a box in the patio, and they were stolen. The number is not only more than is reasonable to expect for errant golf balls, but the speed that they hit is dangerous, and the angle that they approach from makes it very difficult to prevent. For example, they put dozens of large dents in a metal awning on my property and have put one- to two-inch-deep holes in the stucco on the house, which indicates a speed that would be very dangerous if a person were to be hit. While I understand that living on a golf course entails a certain level of risk and damage to personal property, the high number of golf balls landing on my property or hitting the home is highly unusual and unacceptable, on many occasions multiple per day during the high season, and even sometimes multiple per day in the summer when there are significantly less golfers. On one day this February, I counted four hitting the roof, two hitting the side of the house, and two landing on my patio. I believe this is due to the outdated design of the golf hole on the Takweet Creek specifically. I think that the placement of the hole is too far away from the tee-off, and that specific hole is very long and narrow with houses on both sides. This issue may have also been worsened by prior removal of trees on the course that were there for protection, though I'm unclear what the course used to look like.
Your time has expired.
Okay, well, yeah, that's mainly what I had to say. I did want to just quickly add that I view this as a safety concern. I had construction workers working on my property who contacted me saying that the golf balls were so frequent and so fast that they were concerned about working on the property. My neighbor said the same thing with his construction workers. So it is something that is unusual.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is David Thompson. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Brad, my husband, just spoke to you about some of the concerns we have. We really, you know, we anticipated that we would have an occasional errant golf ball on the house, but it's really gotten to the point where it's unsustainable, and we're hoping you can help direct staff to get something done with this. We had, we jumped in early and had solar put on the house shortly after we bought it. It was installed this summer, and then by the end of the summer, we already had three broken panels in that time. They closed the golf course for the overseeding for a period, so it was closed for several weeks just before Thanksgiving when we were here. We went on the roof to check. We still had three broken panels. We just got back today, and we have another broken panel. We just got back today and we have another broken panel. So just since Thanksgiving, we left the day after Thanksgiving, we have another broken panel. This is just not going to be sustainable in the long term, so we're hoping you can help us find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to city council, city manager requests and upcoming agenda development.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Our next meeting is December 15th and we have a presentation from the Plaza Theater providing us an update that should take maybe 10 minutes. And then consent calendar items and the new council members swearing in. So we're really focusing our next meeting on, on that process.
Councilmember Corus.
Yeah, I just want to thank our staff, especially our event staff, for an amazing festival lights parade and Christmas tree lighting. I mean, they were both incredible. But that had to be one of the best festival lights parade. The floats were great. It was the best city float by far we've ever had and it just ran really well. It was tight. And I just heard so much feedback and, you know, there were people three, four deep, like on a lot of the route. And just really commend staff for their hard work on it and really a great parade. So thank you.
Other comments or questions from Mayor Proton?
Thank you so much. In terms of, are we doing agenda development as well? Or not yet? Okay, great. One of the things I wanted to raise now, but likely will need to discuss with the future council is just had some small businesses who have raised the issue of the banner flags that you might see, for instance, that say coffee or anything else to kind of draw attention to a certain business. And I know those are technically not allowed in Palm Springs, but a bunch came up around town not that long ago. And I think code took most of them down. But I'm interested in how we can possibly make some edits to sign ordinances in terms of making sure our small businesses are still able to attract attention, especially when they're in some small more, oh gosh, now I'm forgetting the word, small shopping centers. And not as visible from the street. So just something that has come up and I think is worth taking a look at and then hoping that then, once we get to the new council and we can kind of get a feel for their interest.
Others. If I could, just last week was an opportunity for the League of California Cities to gather. We had over 200 league leaders from around the state of California to first meet and talk about legislative priorities for the upcoming year and then the board map to finalize those. And I'm going to read off the list and it's not a shocking list. But it, it does reveal that the, the issues facing us here in Palm Springs are the same kind of issues that are being faced across the state. And the priorities that we established were to prevent and address homelessness, to increase the supply and affordability of housing while retaining local decision-making. Improvements to public safety, including the funding of public safety. And lastly, to safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. And there are a tremendous number of issues associated with the last. Not the least of which is the California Business Roundtable, which is an organization of extremely powerful corporate interests, is very close to having the signatures to place on the 2024 ballot. A measure that would fundamentally change the manner in which local municipalities can approve sales tax increases such as Measure J. It would change it to requiring that all tax increases would require a two-thirds vote. For those of us who remember how much work went into Measure J, Measure J would have failed if this initiative had been in place. The estimate is that the California Business Roundtable is planning to spend upwards of $40, $50 million in support of this initiative. It is going to be a major fundamental issue for all of us in municipalities who need these kinds of additional revenues in order to be able to serve our public. So we will definitely be hearing more about that. All right. And I want to second, Councilmember Corus, it was just wonderful to be out there Saturday evening and see so many people from across the Coachella Valley. And they were having a wonderful time in our city. It was, it was safe. It was caring. It was a great night to be in Palm Springs. If there are no other comments, then we will adjourn the city council meeting at 8:41 PM. The next city council meeting will be held on December 15, 2022 at 5:30 PM. We will give great thanks to our departing city council members and we will have the pleasure of swearing in our new city council members and swearing in our new mayor for the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.